All right. Good morning, everyone. We're starting a little late today because we had to go to the memorial building to test the voting equipment and I'm happy to report that it is working properly. So let's go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance and new employee, Wilbert, can you lead us in the pledge, please? Wilbert, I'm sorry.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recalling for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Well, I don't know who's last. So we have a new office assistant, his name is Wilbert Lively and he is standing here to my right running Zoom for us today. He is taking Amy's place, who is moving up to a different part of the organization.
So we're breaking him in today? So anything you'd like to throw at him? Go ahead.
So, all right, do we have any exonerations, combined, divide?
Doesn't look like.
Refunds, nothing?
Yeah.
Motion for payroll?
Make a motion to approve payroll. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vouchers and invoices, Ruth, anything?
There was nothing major that I saw. It didn't stick out. Didn't stick out.
If I have any questions?
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
We do not have draft minutes from the last meeting yet. I haven't seen any. Great, thank you. So, NA on the meeting minutes. And estate settlements, we have Donald Edward Best Jr., Brenda Carol Bragg, Brenda Carol Dent, Evelyn Marie Elliott, Samuel Dean Gregory, James Frederick Hall, James Richard Ramsey, Janetta Alice Rogers, Michael Allen Ward, Robert Mitchell Williams.
Always.
Yeah, it's our sympathies to the families of these folks. I move that we accept estate settlements. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have, it looks like we have a few minutes before we lay the levy.
Number one on the exhibit, we don't have a letter, so. Alright, so the next is approval signature of the MLE with the FKNK use the memorial building as an emergency evacuation shelter.
Will you do that?
Yep.
Tom motions for approval.
Yeah, I heard, I was just thinking.
I don't know if John heard or not.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's how I hear this.
The next one is that letter. So it's basically one of the record services from record rotation because they do not have the, they're not registered as a forehire only salvage. I'll send the language to Ken.
Would you go out on, should we go out on our letterhead?
Well, you can't, it usually goes out on the 9-1-1. We can do it, alright? On our letterhead, y'all can sign it. I mean, it doesn't. Whatever you want.
Wait, 9-1-1 is fine. I mean, we had approved a letter for 9-1-1 to send out on this letterhead to remove this record that doesn't meet the PSC guidelines.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is Tiffany on here? So the next is a hazard mitigation lease with Mary Abscher.
Yeah, that's David.
Where they're just leasing county hazard mitigation property.
It's just a year lease.
I don't, where did this come from? No, but I mean, like, is it something we've already, have we already been leasing with these folks?
A lot of the hazard mitigation. Tiffany's on there, they, they just can't build structures and a lot of them use it for gardening or animal cats.
Do we know this one's being used for and all that stuff and the damp area, these are leased.
They can't build structures or fences?
I'm here.
Do you know what they're using the property for, Tiffany?
They're, they're just leasing it to basically take care of it, just keep it cut, that kind of thing.
Maybe I'm gonna make a suggestion the next time, because this is a year-to-year lease, that, just for the commission's sake, if you would give pictures of the property.
Okay.
At least, just so we know what's being done with the property and they're doing what they said they were supposed to do.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I, I think that is a good idea. I mean, I, I like more detail on these because I don't want to just come through and have leases and not know anything about the property or anything about its use.
Right now, it's just fake it. You know, there's nothing on it. And, and when they lease these, these properties, they're not allowed to put any kind of a permanent structure on the property. They can use it for a garden, they can just keep it cut, what have you. And even if they put a garden, they still aren't allowed to put stakes in the garden. And that's a FEMA thing, that's not our role, that's, you know, FEMA role. So lots of times people lease them just because they're next to their property and they just want to keep it looking nice, you know, since it's next to their home or whatever.
No, I think, I think the commission needs to know, just, just for not taking anybody's word. I think Ms. Taylor was more or less wanting to know what was going on, so pictures before next year or even this year. I'm just, I'm just making suggestions to, to make sure it's being done correctly is all the thing I mentioned.
Well, I'm looking at this, the first page of this lease with Ms. Abscher and under lease payments, it says tenant shall pay landlord a lease payment of $1 spelled out, and then in parents it has $2. I mean.
That, that was a typo on my part. It's $1 per property and there's two, two separate properties that she's wanting to lease. So she'll technically be paying $2 total.
Watch eight, nine.
Yeah.
And then watch well.
I mean, it's not, it's not terribly time sensitive, is it? Or is it?
No.
Okay, can you, then can you go ahead and, can we put this on the next agenda and get us some pictures? Because I, I'd like to know what, what we're doing.
Okay.
So I move that we postpone this item until the May 4 meeting.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next thing is the live burn park employees, but most of you want to wait to do that in such a session, do it now.
Let's wait. Yeah, Michelle, write it back. Are you ready, Michelle? Hello again.
So, my probate clerk, Lisa Garrett, has asked that the county commission allow, appoint two more fiduciary commissioners to serve the county in our probate matters. We currently have two, Mr. Bundeltjeff and Trishy. You can have up to four per county, and it would just help kind of spread out that workload. They're assigned in rotation to probate cases that are above a certain amount or if someone files a claim against the state and then that claim is repeated. And so they are then become the mediator between those parties.
Were you aware that Jamie resigned? He just, we just got a letter from him this morning.
I was gonna say it might need to be three.
Yeah.
Well, and she moved.
Yeah, go ahead.
And we made him aware of the meeting. Because in the process, you know, you're dealing with things that's different. We currently have, I just slipped up past 2015, since 2015, we now have 48 open estates that are in the burden fiduciary mission.
Do we have, have we had anyone express interest in doing it? Because it is a.
No, we were, we were discussing options on that. Part of the issue has been with Jamie and with Phil is they are well-known lawyers in this area and anytime they have done work for a decedent or their family, they oftentimes don't feel comfortable then being the impartial mediator of your state. And so they therefore then refuse it. Sometimes use Paul Clayden as a third option, but you can, well, I'm a lawyer in this area. And then they all have their own practices. We're hoping to find some ideas, maybe you guys might have some ideas of people that would not make immediate Fayetteville, but close enough that you want to work with people, things are referred.
Do we need to put out an RFP for that?
I think that Allison would have more contact with attorneys than
I do.
Tom and I would.
I do, but I think we need to probably put out a request or proposal.
And we should be on there. I mean, I think, I don't see anything wrong with advertising and letting your asking.
I think we should advertise it. I mean, there are a couple in Raleigh, a couple in Nicholas, Nanny and Kala, but I feel like we ought to just put out an RFP and see if anybody's interested.
Or county that are willing to serve it, but we're not thinking of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking of a couple that don't live right here in the median area, but like Vicki Hilton might be interested. She, she actually is a CPA on top of all of that, but no idea. I mean, I think we ought to advertise it and then just output the word out, let people know we're advertising. So you want, so we're gonna need three more, sounds like.
If we could have four.
Four, okay.
So total. And I, I mean, I know Trishy's also, I'm the best of, Alvin also. A well-known lawyer, she's really long time, very good lawyer.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, you're welcome. Put that out there. What, I think we'll do it once we get it back. So I, let's just, I move that we advertise for four new fiduciary commissioners.
One second.
All those in favor? Aye. Is that a "aye" from you too? For the fiduciary commissioners that we advertised for four?
Yeah.
We just voted, you vote?
Oh, yeah.
Yay or nay?
Sorry, I didn't. You know, when you're deaf, you just can't hear everything going on, folks.
All right. So, do we have Alan?
Yeah.
Oh, you're filling in for Alan.
So this is the recertification of the rating system through the Department of Homeland Security. It's for flood insurance over here.
Okay. I just had a vision of, have you ever seen this, it's where you have the same employee, like at a hotel, he's working behind the desk and then he's working somewhere else? Like, that's Angela.
We do that every year, so people have flood insurance can save 10%.
Well, I move that we participate in the program.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just have some at one spot.
Yeah.
If we lay the levy now, we'll be back on schedule.
Okay. Let's do it.
All right, so lay the levy, approve the, this is the order we signed. You also have to do that better. Which we'll have to print and send all that out. Here's basically approving the tax rates, the state ordinance office already sent back to them.
Okay. So, we just moved, delayed the levy is presented. Okay.
It's a long one.
All right, well, I move that we approve the tax rates approved by the state tax commissioner in this attached sheet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
John was.
Michelle has to sign the top two. Ray, come back up, Michelle. This is with regard to emergency polling location change, precinct 65.
The owner of the building on 65 contacted us a week and a half ago and said because of her, the owner's health and the disrepair of the building, she didn't fill the appropriate polling place. So we found an alternative to move those people from the New River Camp Town building to the Midland Trail High School.
Okay, well, I move that we approve that change. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, the next thing is the drawdown request for the courthouse facilities improvement. Drawdown is mine, it's Alabama. This is basically asking them for $96,000.
And will we get our reimbursement?
Yeah, for our $20,000 budget.
Okay, I move that we approve this form to get our reimbursement for the annex repairs.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything?
It's just the letter that's written. And then the last thing on my list was the meeting dates. Y'all could look at your calendars and we could do that later today. Because we're gonna have a break.
Okay, is one built in? Okay. Yeah, let's do that a little bit later because I hadn't, I didn't get it or look at it in advance enough to review it. All right, well, let's go ahead and move into the 9:45 for the White Oak PSD. First, why are we getting ARPA requests when we haven't set those for the GWA yet?
That was something that was, the one was approved. But that's not about today. That was about the White Oak PSD, I asked it to be on the agenda. And I think it's Leslie.
She's here.
Oh, there she is, Leslie's here.
Say something.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, because I don't know what.
I had a call from Mike Wiseman stating that he didn't want David Althizer asking for money for you guys unless someone is here to approve it. Over the past few months, David had been proactive and asking for things without you guys knowing about it. And Wiz called and made me aware of it and said that David is no longer to make any requests unless you guys are here with him. I made that clear to him during our last meeting and I wanted you to be aware, Larry, of what I said to him. So, we need to make sure that any of your engineering people that come in has your blessing to ask for the money. And on this case, I prefer that you guys come in and ask for it at the same time. It, it's just out of line for me. In the six years that I've been doing this and with all the PSDs that I've worked with, I've never had someone take that much of initiative and come in and ask for things without letting the board know first. So I wanted to make you aware of what I told him in our open meeting a few weeks ago. And I will still stand by that and I wanted to say it in front of him that I did tell that to him and I wanted to make sure that, you know, your PSD was aware of the situation.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I think it was America, one of our codes last month. That's where all this started from. But you know, doesn't do anything that could, is not, not exactly sure. I might say that exactly and I won't get into that now, but we know exactly. I think they made it in the presentation last month. Give you a scenario one, a scenario two. But Matthew.
Okay.
Tell you exactly what happened.
All right. Thanks.
So what is this agenda item about, Ben?
I, it's the treatment bypass, it's the water that's dumping into the creek and going down into the National Park. Larry, you want to come up and explain this or?
Well, Matthew's probably a little bit better at explaining that. Go ahead. I'm the project manager for the Phase 1 and 2. Phase 1 project's under construction right now. Phase 2 is what we're talking about, that's the bypass project. And so, project 10, there's a sanitary sewer bypassing right now. When flows get up really high, they bypass the biological process. They do this and that. This project is to remove that bypass. PSD negotiated with the BEP to bring themselves under consent order in good faith to remove that bypass several years ago. And we received environmental support letters from the National Park Service, the New River Conservancy and the West Virginia Rivers Organization in support of the project. And they've met all their deadlines so far in the consent order. We have a few that are still out there looming, which, current one being August 2022 to submit final design on this Phase 2 project. The hurdle that's difficult for PSD to overcome is financing that design. And that's, that's part of the reason we requested that funding. So I wanted to be able to clarify that request. And so essentially what you have, you have three columns. The first column being the entirety of the project, just to contextualize everything. And then the second column being the original ARP request. And then the third being the revised one, that's created the confusion unfortunately. And essentially, the revised version was to capture all the free permanent financing bodies for the project. So this is essentially everything that PSD would have to finance or pay for prior to receiving a permanent financing. However, with that being said, I believe and I'll let Larry chime in or Eddie chime in if I may speak, but I think that they would just be grateful to receive anything in that grant. Our interest there is just to put out what they would have to pay for themselves. And they did do that on the Phase 1 project, however, it didn't occur after the result, the design itself. And they have paid for the study or phase out of pocket for this project.
Does White Oak have any reserve for any of this funding? I mean, they have any, they want us to fund the whole, they want us to use the RP money to fund the design, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking, does White Oak have any funding that contribute towards that also?
They have self-finance, so. They have self-finance, the forty thousand for the study and the four phases of this project. If, if, if you were to choose scenario one being three hundred and forty-five, the original request, then they would have to see the off that one name. Just between the bottom three.
Has there been any other agencies that you've asked for money?
We're currently pursuing design one. We have to see what back.
We were definitely told the three hundred and forty-five thousand. That was our first one and then we got another request right after that for the five oh three. Again, not hearing from the board until just recently. And. I mean, that's a big change in the number. Coming into us.
As always, that was a mistake.
Engineering survey and topo.
Yes, sir.
What's, what's, what's the actual about?
So that is taking more. The engine in the tunnel right now, we're carrying that right now, we've actually.
I think.
It's a, it's a big measure that's necessary for the time.
Okay, is it, y'all want a topo of it?
Yes, sir, we actually already have.
Well, there's actually a site out there that had, already has a topo you didn't have to pay for. Then whether he was aware of that or not. It's a topo of one foot grid. What was y'all, what did y'all topo that?
Uh, we, it's, it's much tighter than that.
It's tighter than one foot?
Um, from what I understand.
One you understand or you know, I'm just asking a question. I've only heard of one foot. I've only, I've only heard of one foot.
I would have to ask mainly, mainly measuring pipe inverters and tank inverters and tank planks, that's what I'm most interested in.
Okay.
But we did also do took our, took ours as well.
Okay. Just for anybody out there now, there's a, there's a, Ted County has a topo of one foot increments, it's free.
Is it a lot of ones in?
He called Jamie at the mapping office. Yeah.
Is this eligible for other funding under a, a planning source or anything like that?
I believe for CWS or R, our Tom.
Oh, I know that's the. It can't continue going to Dunlop Creek and then down to the National Park. There's a lot of people that stop there on their way through and, and still try to catch a fish every now and then. But it, it's a. I would like to see you try some other funding issue, other funding opportunities. Whether it's through a grant or, or through a bank or. Or whatever, I mean, we're, we're limited on the amount that we're receiving in. I mean, there's other counties around us that got triple or quadruple the amount that we got. And we're trying to, to take water and sewer into places that it's never been before. Imagine getting your water out of a creek. And the creek dries up and. Then you gotta start driving to get clean water. I mean, this day and age, we shouldn't have to do that. That's why we've chosen other projects to, to lead because. I knew that we would do around three forty-five, but then when it goes to five oh three, man, it's a totally different ballgame. That's going from the first floor up to the fifteenth floor quickly. Now, I can't answer for anybody else, but I, I would like to see if you can get funding through someone else. And then. Maybe used as a secondary. But I can tell you, you know, coming up with five oh three is just out of the question at this time, but that's my thoughts. Other than what the other two commissioners have to say.
I do have one question, John. Are you, are you, I didn't want to interrupt you, you done?
Huh? Were you finished?
Yes, I was done.
Okay.
That's what I said, so it's your turn to say.
I was just curious, some of the, I look at these in the, in the total project cost, they're already in the total project cost.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so how, how would that, would you take them out of the total project cost? Or does it need to stay in the total project cost?
Yeah, the total project cost is just, it captures our.
So in total project cost, I'm just using the scenario. If the commission did decide to do this, that money be refunded to the county commissions since it's already in the total project cost?
I'm really, I'm not so sure, I would have to check with funding agencies, I think that they did do the. So.
So it hasn't been done like that before?
Yeah, I, I'll just knock through the commission.
It has. That's why I wanted to mention to the commissioners, I bring it up to see if it was. Is this time sensitive?
It actually is.
Unfortunately, it is.
When does it have to be?
According to the consent order, they have to have their final design complete by August twenty twenty-two.
Okay, when, when? If, if we, if we, and I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but if, if we postpone this to the next meeting, would that, would it jeopardize? Man, I'm, I'm just bringing, just asking a question.
I guess that would probably be a question for Matthew, I mean, it's because they're the ones that have to complete the preliminary time design. Their work is going to depend on.
Leslie, is there anything else that you could bring up or another idea for funding?
We can go out to our, our other sources, our single water S R M, like Matthew mentioned, I know he's already reached out to them. And doesn't, hasn't had a, a response from them. You can always ask the infrastructure council for. Funding. If we put in an application with the infrastructure now. They wouldn't hear it until the end of June.
Is there any way, I know that there's been some emergency money floating around. Because we got it for another PSD. Would this qualify because of the PS, it wouldn't?
This doesn't fit the bill of an emergency project as we do some critical needs projects in the next.
Trying to think what other, what other way you can run with this, but I just can't.
I'd like to postpone this until we can hit with region four because we have a lot of different competing priorities. Several of them has the same firm.
Can we, can we postpone without a date?
We. I think we have to give it a date, but we can postpone it. At least one more time. Worried about procedurally. Yeah.
When's, when's our next meeting, May second, May fourth? Can we put this off until May fourth, guys? That's our next meeting. And that way we can try to come up with some ideas of.
Could we even do emergency meeting, I presume if we had to, yeah.
We could. We could, but I think, I think if we had an admin meeting with region four prior to the fourth. Thinking or admin meeting on the second. Because I want to discuss it in the context of the other projects we have and then we can set some priorities at that meeting on the fourth.
Thank you for your opportunity and speech and. Corner follow and.
Right, I mean, we postpone this item to May fourth meeting.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We say May second?
Uh, for the May fourth meeting.
Fourth, yeah, fourth. No, I want to say second. Yeah, come on, Larry. You got something to add?
Do, I just wanted to, sorry, guys, if there was an error in the first and second scenario. But we are really a small PSD, you know, small area. We've, not a struggle, but hey, we never had a commission for one down as far as on that, going back ten fifteen years. But that money is really valuable to us and would love for you to consider. Opportunities for us, we've got it, we've got this project going, there's no stopping it. And eventually we'll get it paid for, but we're looking at fifty years down the road to get this paid for. So needing any help that you can give us, we do appreciate it very much.
When's your next board meeting?
We've got one today and then the next one will be.
Oh, I'm, I'll be here all day long today, so.
How about the next, well, May will be.
Okay. This is my own PSD, so I. I don't want to say no, but I don't want to promise what we don't have.
Yeah.
So I'd rather sit down and talk about it and try to look at other areas that we could do this. And if, if you guys want to have a meeting, I mean, I'll be glad to come, I'll wrangle Leslie into coming too. So we can try to figure out what we could do with trying to help with getting funding. Because I know this is important when the D E P steps in and says, hey, guys. This is what's going on, we need you to take care of it.
And as you said, our plan's so close to moving. And we're trying to do the right thing, the proper thing.
Right. Okay.
We ask you for your help, we appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Tell period, I said, huh? All right.
May second. The admin meeting.
Oh.
We're, we're gonna put it on our fourth agenda, but. We have an administrative meeting, we usually meet with. When we get our questions answered like that beforehand. Whatever works for you, three o'clock. We meet from two to, usually from two to four, so anytime in there, you can just text one of us. Okay. Okay, sweet. We're gonna want, Leslie, we're gonna want to discuss it in the context of all those projects we have. Which are most critical? Okay. Okay, so. Back to the agenda. Do we, have we received that MOU or are we ready to discuss the park stuff yet, the life park stuff? We're gonna do that. So, yeah, the, the employee specific stuff for sure. Because it looks to me like. Well, why don't we take, why don't we take a quick break now? And to give us a chance to look at the calendar, get the calendar passed, because everything else on here looks like it's executive session. Does that work? All right, so we'll take a break and return at ten after ten. This meeting. I don't have to have any reprint them, you got yours?
Yeah.
Okay, you got yours.
I think it's.
All right, so we're back to, to go over the, and approve the meeting dates. For the meetings in July through December of this year. The meeting dates are going to be as follows, or I move that they be as follows. July thirteenth, July twenty-seventh, August tenth, August twenty-fourth, September seventh. September twenty-first, October fifth, October nineteenth. November second, we have to canv- canvas on November fourteenth. November twenty-third. And December seventh, and we will have a tentative meeting if needed scheduled for December twenty-first. You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, nothing on the MOU and we need to go into executive session to discuss everything else on the agenda and exhibit list, so. I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
At, um, ten twenty-one.